Good evening. I'd like to call the November eleventh, tenth, two thousand twenty-five Borough Council meeting to order. Will a clerk please read the open public leading statement?
Adequate notice has been provided as required under Chapter two thirty-one Public Law nineteen seventy-five specifying the time, date, and location of this meeting by posting a copy of the notice at Municipal Building on the Municipal Website and providing a copy of the annual notice scheduled to the official newspapers of the borough. Notice is also on file in the Municipal Clerk's office.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas?
Here.
Council McCollins?
Here.
Councilman Manko? Councilwoman Payne?
Here.
Councilman Poznanski?
Here.
Councilman Potter?
Here.
Mayor Murray?
Present.
Borough Attorney Peter Bignolo?
Present.
Borough Engineer Mike McClellan?
Here.
Borough Engineer Lou Plaskonka?
Present.
Borough Administrator Fred Carr?
Present.
I also am present.
Now is the time for public comment limited to the resolutions-
May I salute the flag?
Oh, I'm sorry. Will everyone please stand for the salute of the flag followed by the moment of silence first?
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Try that again. Now is the time for public comment limited to the resolutions on the agenda only. If you wish to speak, please step up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Again, as the public portion is limited to the comments only on the resolutions listed on the agenda at this time. There will be a five-minute time limit as set forth by the rules of council. If someone raises their hands, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none of closed audience comments. Ordinance introduction first reading. This is an introduction on ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen seventy-six. There'll be no public input on the ordinance tonight. The introductory summary will be published as required by law. In second reading, public hearing, final adoption will be considered on the November-
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fifth.
Fourth.
Fourth, thank you, two thousand twenty-five. Full copies of this ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board of the Municipal Building, and available at no cost in the office of the Municipal Clerk between the hours of eight-thirty a.m., four-thirty p.m., Monday through Friday. Will a clerk please read ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen seventy-six by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-five, Water, Section twenty-five dash seven-point-two-three, replacement of water meters of the revised general ordinances of the borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. Is there any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think this two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month is too high. I think we should lower that down.
Quick question. Did this come, I guess, Councilman Manko, this was a suggestion from the Utilities Committee?
Yes, this was the motivational charge that is only levied upon people who have not had their meters done. That would incentivize them to basically get out of the way of the grant and the people who need the grant.
Thank you.
I also agree with Councilman Collins. I could see the two-hundred-and-fifty a month, if at the end, whether it's stated or not stated, that they get some kind of a return, which would be some kind of a service charge, say a fifty-dollar charge, but the two-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I do not agree with.
And that's two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, so they're going to get seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars in a quarter.
Exactly.
Well, I'd also like to say, I wish people, the forces were that adamant at getting the tax money from Ford Avenue, seven million dollars plus from Ford Avenue, as they are with this.
So, Councilman, if I may mention, two-hundred-and-fifty is a considerable number, but the council has been talking for four months and calling people, the Utility Department has been calling people for four months, and people are not making appointments.
That's four months that they've been calling them? That's six months before that, that they had all the time to get it done, free service, and there were six months before those six months where it was clearly disclosed that this was coming forward? And in a town where we have rates that everybody wants to complain about, there's finally something set and set forth to create some type of progress and perhaps to help that, which will cut down on the labor cost in the future, and the people who won't get out of its way, who won't schedule the appointment, I, uh, hi, I'm Councilman Frank Manko. I have no mercy for that. Just do it. Just get it over with. There's grants, it's free, we'll figure it out. There's more grants coming once we get everything done, but it's for the good of the town, and, uh, it's Milltown. We need to do it. I don't think it's really, I don't think it's something that we could, we should argue about. I think it's all, just as a rule, did we do, did we vote to do the meters? We did. Did we get the funding? We did. I think this is just a final step, and whether we want to go, oh, two-fifties too much, it should be two-hundred, oh, they should get some back. Huh. Maybe we enact this, and suddenly, in a month and a half, they'll all be done. I guess we'll find out.
It won't be a month and a half, Frank, because it's quarterly billing.
Lou, real quick, how many, how many we, how many residents still need-
Well, I think once it's passed, then it's motivation.
Yeah.
Until it's passed, it's just chatting.
I'll say for myself, I'm an elected representative. I work for you, all of you. You don't work for us, period.
I, I, you're just going to open up the door, we're going to get a couple seniors down here, you know, at the, at the council meeting, they're going to come down and they're going to say, I got a seven-hundred-and-fifty-dollar bill, I'm on a fixed income. What are you going to say to them then?
I'm going to say that you should have gotten your meter turned. We had, I don't know, six months to do it, another four months, we talked about it, and we talked about it last year.
You know.
And I guess there's a customer service phrase that applies to this would be, failure to act promptly on your side does not constitute an emergency.
I mean, you're going to have seniors down here that are, you know, eighties and nineties, and they're not going to, what are they going to, they're going to be barely getting in the door, and they're going to come down here saying, I got this big bill? I mean, you got to have-
Seniors suffer no more than a family of four, or a family of six, or a family of one.
You know that?
Yes.
How do you know that?
When, when, when bills go up-
What are you talking about?
When bills go up-
What are you talking about?
I'm trying to tell you, if you want, if you got a minute, I'll let you know.
Yeah.
If everybody's, look, when things get more expensive-
You're not making any sense, though.
Two people, right, if their water bill goes up, their water bill goes up. If four people live in a house and the water bill goes up three percent, mathematically, it should go up more than the two people. But typically, in a household of four, it's two working adults and a couple of kids. So, there's still just two incomes.
So, I think we're not talking about the rate, we're talking about-
Right, you're right. We're talking about literally a fee for not doing what you're supposed to do.
That's your question, Councilman Collins, Councilman Poznanski, is this a simple program? Once you call and schedule your appointment, you come off the list. Simple as that.
Mr. Carr, I understand that. It sounds too simple. But I still have a right to speak for the residents here.
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir. I'm just explaining, I'm explaining that the purpose of the conversation is to encourage people, okay, to make a phone call, it's a free phone call, for a free installation of a free water meter in your home for those people who can't seem to make their call.
I said, I agree, you charge them two-fifty a month, if at the end, and they pay up, they pay, they get everything back but a fifty-dollar service charge for someone's time. But to charge two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month, and I understand that some people get lost in this, I do not appreciate.
So, anybody who has made an appointment doesn't get charged?
I understand that.
So, I said, so, so, I, yes, sir. So, that's, if that's your recommendation, sir, council can act the way they want. What I've said for the last five months-
They already have, but I'm expressing my opinion, which I will.
Yes, sir, you should, absolutely.
That's right.
I mean, it's easy to simply had a desk and pass out the bills, but we have to listen to the residents. What are we going to say to seniors?
You should simply say that you need to schedule it, and it goes away.
Why don't you come to the senior center and do that?
I will, um, I'm free as far as I know Thursday.
Good.
What time are the open-
Don't be a men's club meeting. Thursday morning at nine-thirty.
Yeah, I can't take off of work. I got bills to pay, too. You know, you have water things and electrical things.
You got to pay two-hundred-and-fifty dollars a month.
Lou, how many, how many do we still have open?
There's a hundred and ninety-five unscheduled at this point.
Okay, one town.
But there are, those aren't some commercials, isn't that correct?
We've taken the commercials off the list.
Are you still a hundred and ninety-three residential?
There's, um, of the one ninety-five, there's a hundred and seventy-three residential.
A hundred and seventy-three residential.
Thank you. And how many does the borough still remain not installed? Lou?
There are, um, so you got the hundred and ninety-five unscheduled, you have twenty-four on the callback list who are scheduling appointments. We have one that is scheduled, and that is all of them. So, that's, uh, fifteen.
So, Lou, it's moving along, though? Not slow, but it's moving along.
About two-hundred, two-hundred and twenty.
Two-hundred and twenty have not replaced.
And you have fifteen borough ones that are not replaced, correct?
Yeah, they're being scheduled now.
Okay.
There, we were, as you heard from the call, Mayor, last Friday, we're waiting on the correct meters to come in.
So, I do have a list of the twenty-four that were on the callback list. A lot of them, the comments were, there was no dates to schedule, there were repeated attempts to schedule, because I know the one date that they had was, was out there, it was November sixth, uh, I'm sorry, there's going to be one date, December first, as of the November sixth meeting, there's only going to be one date in December, December first. Some, some are working during the week, and it's, they only have weekends available, I saw two like that, so we have to try to figure that out.
Yeah, before December first hits, they've agreed to open up another date. So, there's always one date open as, as we progress.
But Fred, you're saying if they make the call, they come off the list. So, the ones that you were saying, Mayor, they've already made the call, so they wouldn't be on the list.
Yeah.
On this list that we're going to, that they want to put the surcharge on, because they're making an attempt.
Could I, um, could I just ask, um, maybe for some clarification, um, just for the public, um, why it is so important to schedule all these replacements, because as I understand it, it's so that we can begin the lead line work, right, and so that we know how many people will need financial assistance from the grant that we so generously received, right, from the Assemblymen. Um, do I have that right, Mr. Carr?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
Yes, so I think that, um, there's a really important reason why we're trying to create an incentive here, and I guess what I haven't heard yet is, is there an alternative plan from Councilman Collins or Councilman Poznanski? Do you have another suggestion in terms of creating an incentive?
Well, I can tell you that there are towns, because I've looked into it, that people have been able to opt out. We don't have an opt-out program, we could have an opt-out program. It would cost the people more money, but some people have wanted to opt out, and some people have said that to me.
That's the first I've heard of that one.
Well, you don't speak to me anyway.
Opting out, opting out of new meters, or opting out of what, a water system?
Well, I'd like to ask the professionals if that's true.
I'm listening.
Is an opt-out, as Mr., as Councilman Poznanski-
There are towns, they have opt-out programs. They have a program like this, they have an opt-out program.
I hear what you're saying. I'm asking the professionals, have you heard of something like this?
Can you clarify what the opt-out is?
What is, what that means? I never heard of it.
I'm not sure, I've not heard that. Yes, they opt out of this option, which is not an option.
But they want to, they'd want to opt out to-
They know they'll pay more, but they don't trust the system, which is what I have heard, so they have an opt-out program where they do have someone come to the house, they pay more a month, but, but they do. I wouldn't do it, but they do it.
But our professionals have not heard of that as an option, so.
Pat, I'll tell you, next meeting, I will bring information. Would that be okay with you?
So, is that water meters, or is that electric meters?
That's for both. I'll bring information, because I have information for both, I've looked into both.
So, if I may answer the Councilman's question. So, the, the water meter, this is talking specifically about the water meter replacement project. So, if the borough, who has hired Kornmaine and Vipo to do the water meter replacement progress, if Vipo, who's being paid to do this, walks away, and they have indicated for the last month or two that because of the reduction of the calls to their call center, that they're no longer going to be able to sustain coming here to work because they have other contracts to work at, then they will get to the point where it now becomes the responsibility of the borough, they're going to say, look, for all intents, about to put to final appoint on it, you're wasting my time, I can't get these done because I have other projects to do, I have to send my resources someplace else, and now we get to do it ourselves. Last year, the Water Department in the borough of Milltown, before we hired Vipo, replaced these water meters, these new water meters themselves. It took them all year to get about fifty meters installed. That's because there's only Don Herman, Ian Brown Senior, and one other person in the Water Department, and there are other, they're doing other things. They're working through the list. So, if you say you have about two-hundred meters left, it's going to take them four years to replace the meters in the rest of the town. That's four years to replace the meters that we already have sitting up in a box. That's four years to get into the house, to replace the meter, add the sending unit, get the software, which is no longer supported by, uh, the census, okay, add the little sensing unit where it downloads automatically, and evaluate that person's individual service line in accordance with the law, all right, to meet our thirty-one, uh, twenty, twenty-three-one deadline by DEP. Now, we're doing very well. We're way ahead, we got about two-hundred, give or take, depend on the math, but it's just going to take it a longer time. Next year's twenty-six, that gives us twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, all right, before Don and the boys can do these other meters, okay, and by then we'll be behind the power curve. But if council chooses to change the rules, that's okay. I'm just saying, the purpose of this is to get it done, start the lead line replacement project, and do good things for the town using free money, that's it.
So, Mr. Carr, I just want to say one thing about that. So, that's good, but we haven't made a determination, we're not going to wait for all these meters to go, to go in, and then we're going to start the lead line replacement.
No, sir.
That wouldn't be fair to the people who already made the appointment and have a lead line, they've been identified as having a lead line. I would think that where those people are, they go first to the list. Lead line gets done as soon as possible.
So, CME has that list, and they're, they're preparing a proposal to start working through that list-
Okay.
For the council to take action, using the first million dollars or eight-hundred-thousand dollars that's available, to start replacing individual lead lines in, based on the people that we have the knowledge of.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, there are some who we have identified previously from the letter that we sent out, like the lady who was here at the last council meeting, she got the certified letter as required by law-
Yeah.
That says, why did I get this? Because till we replace it, you get a letter.
Because this isn't just a program to replace the, the water meter, it's a twofold program. It's to replace the water meter and to check for a lead line service.
Correct, sir.
It's two things going on here.
Correct. And now that we have a clean list, we'll be able to start helping people.
Yes.
Or we tell people, it's your line, it's your problem, you pay for it. Or not, you can opt out of it, okay? You don't have to replace the lead service lines in your house, okay? It's up to you. But when you sell that house in a few years, the new owner may insist that that line is replaced before they buy the house.
Right.
At which time, it'll be much more expensive for you, the homeowner, who's trying to sell the home and go, you know, Florida.
Lou, I got a question. Go ahead, Pat, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, just one, just one more follow-up question, Fred. So, to Gary's point in terms of the surcharge, let's say that someone pay, someone calls in January, right, and to try to avoid the surcharge, to Frank's point, right, and, and will they get, build that anyway if they schedule in January?
So, if you see the ordinance, they have to be notified. We're going to send out, we're going to send out, we're going to send out two-hundred-and-twenty-five certified letters-
Yep.
To people, again, reminding that we didn't sort of send certified before, but, you know, consider the staff sending out two-hundred-and-twenty-five, give or take, a few certified letters to people, reminding them again to please call the borough and make an appointment, okay, and that which time, based, hopefully that will, will encourage people to make the appointment, then on the list, okay, but then this council has to decide, how do we move forward?
Right.
How do you want to move forward? Chose not to shut off water, which we're all able to do, because people are denying access to our meter, fine, I understand that, but at the end of the day, what do you want to do? It's not my choice, okay? My recommendation is to move forward, you have to come up with a, the carrot's not working, ladies and gentlemen.
I just want to just be clear, sort of out loud for the public, right, so that the surcharge will happen if you do not schedule before December thirty-first for January.
So, when we talk about January, on, on, on the first of January, magically, everybody's not going to have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar surcharge of the two-hundred-and-twenty-three meters that have not yet been installed. It's not going to, it's not going to happen that fast.
Right.
We need to go through the legal process, providing people sufficient time, most likely for most of January, and then people hopefully will start calling, and we'll get, we'll get people on the list and the project there. But now, let's say it's April, now it's March, okay, and we still haven't, in spite of our best efforts, right?
So, I just wanted you to say that, thank you, that there is plenty of time. It's November tenth. People have plenty of time to get this scheduled, to avoid paying the surcharge. That's what I just wanted, I want the public to hear that.
And so, to the Mayor's point, so we get to the point in the conversation where we have now twenty-five people or so on the callback list, and of course, people work as, you know, it's not inconvenient. When I, once Vipo, Kornmaine, maybe they have a hundred people on the callback list, maybe now it's worth their effort to say, okay, I could get-
Right.
I could be here during this entire week.
Right.
I mean, while they were, had the project going on, they were installing meters every day.
Right.
Okay, they're installed meters in town every day because lots of people were calling, lots of people were making appointments. They had installed on the weekends, as we all know, okay, they installed late at night, but now, how do you install, how do you make those hours available when no one is calling?
Right.
That's our challenge.
Thanks, I just wanted to refresh for everyone.
Councilwoman Payne, I want to apologize, and I've wanted to since I said it, I used your first name, and I'm sorry that I did that.
That's okay.
So, I've been wanting to apologize since I did that. I'm not trying to change anyone's mind. I have my opinion here, whether, whether it stands or not, everyone can have their opinion, and I just, I just voice mine. So, I'm not trying to change anyone's mind.
I got a question, Lou, is there, or maybe Fred, is there any correlation between the lead line, people that have lead lines and non-compliance with the meter replacement?
No.
There's no, there's no correlation? There's not a vigor, people because they have lead lines, or just that people don't?
Obviously, if we haven't gotten into the houses, we don't know if they have lead lines.
You don't know if they've been out there. But that won't hold the, that won't hold the initiation of the, uh, the replacement up.
No, the meters go in regardless.
Correct. Will you have that ready for the next council meeting? The, the scope of the replacement, the water, the water line, lead line replacement?
We can, sure.
Sure.
If you could?
Yeah.
So, we could get the ball rolling on that? Thank you, gentlemen.
As last mentioned, if your interest is in protecting our people, the people of the town, maybe that the longer they wait, the less chance they have of getting any grant money. And then at some point, that's a whole different conversation. The two-fifty a month, that's one conversation, but the conversation that happens in a couple of years, and they go, well, there was no grant money by the time it was left, well, where were you on the list? That's going to be a real hard conversation, because that's probably more like a five, six-thousand-dollar conversation. So, you know, I try to teach my kid not to, uh, look both ways before they cross the street. Once in a while, I may have raised my voice. Yelling's not good, this isn't all that nice either. However, if you're just going to let them do it, at some point, when the answer becomes, there's a bill, there's another bill, you missed the grant, sorry, that's going to be an awkward conversation as well. I like to have my awkward conversations right from the beginning. Just know I am.
Will a clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski?
No.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Ordinance introduction first reading. This introduction of ordinance twenty-five dash fifteen seventy-seven, there'll be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introduction summary will be published as required by law. In a second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building, and available at no cost in the office of the Municipal Clerk between the hours of eight-thirty a.m., four-thirty p.m., Monday through Friday. Will a clerk please read ordinance twenty-five fifteen seventy-seven by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-five, section, Water, Section twenty-five dash four-point-one, Water Rates of the Revised General Ordnances of the Borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in a second?
Still moved.
Second. Have a motion made by Council President Zambranas, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, no, there's nothing about sewer in here. Do we know if sewer's going to go up, or is it fixed? Because our water bill gets the sewer bill also.
So, the water, so, the notification from East Brunswick is that the water rates are going up three-point-five percent in January, sir?
New Brunswick.
And that, yes, New Brunswick, sorry, and the sewer rate is tied to the water rate.
Thank you.
Seeing no further comments, will a clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski?
No.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Ordinance introduction first reading. This is an introduction on ordinance twenty-five fifteen seventy-eight. There'll be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introductory, introduction summary will be published as required by law. In a second reading, public hearing, final adoption will be considered on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building, and available at no cost in the office of the Municipal Clerks between the hours of eight-thirty a.m., four-thirty p.m., Monday through Friday. Will a clerk please read ordinance twenty-five fifteen seventy-eight by title, please?
An ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-two, Electrical Service, Section twenty-two dash thirty-eight, General Service of the Revised General Ordnances of the Borough of Milltown, subsection twenty-two dash thirty-eight point three, Service Rates.
May I have a motion in second, please?
Still moved.
Second. Have a motion made by Council President Zambranas, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comments? Seeing none, will a clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Manko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Poznanski?
No.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Ordinance introduction first reading. This introduction of ordinance twenty-five fifteen seventy-nine, there'll be no public input on this ordinance tonight. The introduction, introductory summary will be published as required by law. In a second reading, public hearing, and final adoption will be considered on November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Full copies of the ordinance will be posted on the Borough website, on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building, and available at no cost in the office of the Municipal Clerk between the hours of eight-thirty a.m., four-thirty p.m., Monday through Friday. Will a clerk please read ordinance twenty-five fifteen seventy-nine by title?
An ordinance to amend Chapter two, Administration, Section two dash seven, Business Administrator, Subsection two dash seven-point-five, Qualifications of the Revised General Ordnances of the Borough of Milltown.
May I have a motion in second, please?
Still moved.
Second. Have a motion made by Council President Zambranas, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm just reading this, because it says, no elected member of the governing body may receive such an appointment as administrator during the member's normal term of office within three years of a normal expiration of member's term of office, except for the possi, possibility of interim appointment to fill an absence in ninety days. Is that correct? That would mean anybody up here, that's correct?
That is what the ordinance reads, and that's what your ordinance read. That's not something that's being changed. That's already a part of your ordinance. The portion that's being changed is subsection B of the first paragraph.
That's all I have.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Thank you. Authorizing payment of municipal obligations. Next on the agenda, we have authorizing payments of municipal obligations. Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-351 by title?
Resolution 2025-351, authorizing the payment of bills, claims, and statements against the Borough of Milltown in the total amount of $654,060.41.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Still moved.
Second. Have a motion made by Council President Zambranas, seconded by Councilman Potter. Is there any comment?
Yes. Come on, this is for Mike or Lou, I'd just like clarification, if I can. Battery storage system, 567575, can you, it's, that's 1270, 251270? Can you, can you tell me about that?
Hang on a second, what second?
Sorry, which one is it?
Um, it's, it's 1270, 251270, dash 1270. It's the battery storage, is it, because I'm trying to find if it's for the battery storage site that we're having come here?
What's the vendor name?
CMV vendor, CMV, yes, yeah.
Yes.
That's us coordinating with it.
It's the, it's the engineer doing, helping with that.
That's right. We're coordinating construction.
Okay, a couple other things.
I wasn't sure whether it was us or somebody.
I'm, I'm sorry. I also have 1713, Main Street Speed Study.
That's correct, you were authorized to prepare the study, with regard to speeds on, on Main Street.
Okay. And Ford Avenue litigation, the legal aspect, you're involved in that? Because I didn't know that.
Yeah, to the extent that there was, as you remember, there was a need to have us appear at the planning board for the redevelopment project. That's what they charged us for.
All right, just checking. Just checking up on you.
No, no, it's okay, Council President. You do that anytime.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries.
A consent resolution has been prepared for the resolutions listed on the agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda will be considered to be routine in nature and haven't been reviewed by Borough Council, being acted upon in one motion. Any items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated on in a separate matter. As any items requiring expenditures are supported by a certification of funds, if any member of the council wants any resolutions acted upon individually, please give me the resolution number and it will be pulled from the consent resolution.
It's 2025-355?
355, you said?
Yes, sir.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay. Will the clerk please read the consent agenda resolution?
Whereas pursuant to the rules of council, the council may establish a consent agenda for any regular or special meetings upon certain conditions. Whereas each of the following resolutions presented before the Borough Council at its regular, at its November 10th, 2025 regular meeting, appear to have the unanimous approval of all members of the Borough Council, Resolutions 2025-353, 354, 356, and 357. Now therefore be it resolved by the Borough Council of the Borough of Milltown that each of the above list of resolutions be approved and adopted by the Borough Council with the same legal effect as though each was read in its entirety at the November 10th, 2025 regular meeting, and adopted by separate vote.
May I have a motion in a second, please?
Still moved.
Second. Have a motion made by Councilwoman Payne, seconded by Councilman Potter. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
Aye.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Will the clerk please read Resolution 2025-355?
Authorizing certain personnel actions, Deputy Municipal Clerk.
Which pleasure, council? Make the motion this resolution be adopted? Motion made by Councilman Potter, seconded by Councilwoman Payne. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have, I have some questions. How much experience does this position call for in the ad? To whoever wants to answer, or not answer.
I think the job posting said two years in the municipal clerk's office.
Does this person have, have that kind of experience?
No, sir.
But, but that's what this position calls for. I, I believe she works, works at, at your site?
Yes, sir.
And she's been there since March?
Yes, sir.
She's had a lot of, lot of jobs. I've, I've looked at the background. We need stability here. Do you see stability here? I, I mean, to be honest, sir, you'll be here for another six weeks, correct?
Correct.
So, this doesn't, this doesn't affect you, but it does affect us, and I think that maybe a, a new committee would be, would be better suited to, to look for a person. My opinion.
And that can happen at reorg.
Okay. I don't know her, I have nothing against her. I, I just, I just know that I, I looked at the resume, and it was just, just a little disconcerting to me, because we do have issues here with people coming and going rapidly, and I wouldn't want to see that happen there.
Do you know if this job was posted on a state website or anything?
So this, the position of the deputy clerk has been posted on the New Jersey League of Municipalities since Mary left eight months ago, or whenever Mary and the deputy clerk left. We have gone through any of a number of iterations, brought in any of a number of possible candidates. It's still an open job search. Councilman, the lady approached me in my job in Spotswood, asked me if the job was still open. I said yes. She talked to Gretchen, she was interviewed by the Personnel Committee. Yes, her knowledge, she's knowledgeable. As you could see from the resume, she came from the pharmaceutical industry, which is going through a considerable flux.
Why, I think I said a lot of things there?
Yes, there are.
It just concerns me because the, the job, the, the timing on her job is, is, is every other year, every year, every other year. It just, it just concerns me because you want some, some stability here. It's what's needed here.
Sir, I agree. I totally agree. But, there are, as you well know, there are factors out there that we, you, I, don't have any control of. I will say that right now, there's no one in the clerk's office of Gretchen.
I understand, I understand, and I know it's a problem.
And it's been that way, and it's been that way for three weeks. So, this lady's not showing up till the end of November. Clerk's offices, and this council has talked back and forth for the last year, year and a half, about how many people we should have in the clerk's office. Lots of philosophical conversations about whether we need two, whether we need three, that we need two and a half, whatever. But I will tell you, one is a lonely number.
But you want the right second one?
Yes, sir, absolutely, but, you know.
I, I remember when there were three people in there.
Agreed.
I'm not saying it was, it was efficient, because maybe there should have been two, but, but I remember when there were three people there. So I, I know that other bodies are needed.
Correct.
But they need to be the right ones.
So, so councilman, there is a, there is a 90-day probationary period, correct?
Yes, there is.
So if you do have this person come in, and if they're not working out, they?
You can let them go.
Let them go.
But you don't want to have to go through that.
But we need the people in the office, because we're getting complaints that there's, there's, we're lacking employees. So this is, and this also was approved by, interviewed by the Personnel Committee, right? Yeah.
And I want to assure you, Councilman Posnansky, that the Personnel Committee has been interviewing, as Mr. Carr has said consistently, since the job was posted. So, we have done our due diligence, and we need someone in the office.
I understand.
You know, so, right now, it's a necessity, and, you know, I think she, I think, you know, I was there for the interview, and I think she's a good fit for right now.
So we interviewed a couple of candidates who had considerable experience in the municipal clerk's office, but we, but we could not offer her, them, the salary that they wanted.
Correct.
And they said, well, I'm not leaving my current job unless you give me 75K, which we would not offer in our salary ordinance. So they said, okay, and didn't take the job.
I do agree, when I, I, being part of the interview process, that it, per movement in transition, they, you know, it, it was, I was aware of it, and I do see where you look at that, and you say that. I do think that the last employment or the current employment, a lot of those tasks cross over into what she'd be doing here. That position was part-time and expected to become full-time, but is no longer going to be full-time there, and that she needs a full-time position. Your concerns are valid. But again, we have a 90-day probationary, that kind of covers us. It does seem, I do think she interviewed well, and, you know, the skill set that she possesses will translate into being effective and a timely manner. Perfect?
I mean, I, I agree with Councilman Posnansky, I mean, this, this should be a career path for somebody, not just to stopover. And if we're just going to do that, you know, I mean, you're just going to do what the same thing you're doing.
Who says it's not going to be a career path?
What's that?
Who says it's not going to be a career path?
Well, oh, I don't know, this is a lengthy resume, and it's, doesn't seem like there's a clear career path here.
Oh, okay.
Do you, I mean, are you going to just hire somebody to fill the seat?
Because you've spent so much time in the, in the borough clerk's office, and you know the ins and outs of the borough clerk's office.
Well, I mean, then you obviously have to address the problem, instead of just putting somebody unqualified in there, because we've had people here, that somebody hired, needed a file clerk, and they lasted two days and they walked out. So, we went through all this process for, it was nil, correct?
But you're also assuming that everything that you're talking about, we didn't address during the interview, and that's a lot to assume.
That's right, I wasn't at the interview, I'm just asking the questions.
Correct. Well, and I already said that we did a very thorough process. So, all the issues you raised, I'm not saying that they're not legitimate, we had the same concerns, and they were addressed.
I mean, if, if it was me, I'd be hiring somebody on a career path to be a municipal clerk.
But you did, but you did hear me say that we have been interviewing for months.
So has she addressed the, the fact that there's no experience in the clerk's office?
We asked her all the appropriate questions during the interview.
We don't know what the questions are, so that is...
Right, because you're not on the committee. So...
That's correct.
In turn, it might be refreshing that you and Councilman Posnansky trust your other council members doing our committee work, as we trust that you are doing your committee work with due diligence.
Well, I also have a different perspective. My mother was a borough clerk in her town, 40 years, and her deputy clerk, who became her clerk, I'm still close with. So I under, I have an understanding that, that other people may not, and that's why I express my concerns here.
Maybe you should have talked to Councilman Posnansky first.
I just had one question. The former deputy clerk, didn't she have her certification for deputy clerk?
No, sir.
She was, sorry, Mary, Mary was getting ready, Mary was getting ready to take the classes?
She was taking the class.
She was getting ready to take the classes, yes, sir.
Is there a requirement that the physician take classes for it?
No.
No, but during the process, during the interview process, she did express a desire to take those classes and do those. You can see she has a college degree, very knowledgeable, she's smart. The, we did not, in my long conversa, I had a few conversations with her in Spotswood, Gretchen interviewed her separately herself extensively, before we brought her to the Personnel Committee. We did reach out to another candidate, Councilman Posnansky, who had more experience, but never responded back. We've had any of a number of, I think the term of art is ghosted, okay? Where we have called people and they've just not responded. They've just not responded like, thank you for the invite, thank you, no, just no response. Okay? The world's different than it was 25 years ago, when I started this profession, or 30 years ago. I knew clerks like your mom, who had been there since high school. They left high school and became, worked in the clerk's office, and 40 years later, they retired. You know, that world is not there anymore, be it for anybody in our professions.
Well, months ago, you hired, you hired someone for, in the finance office, and I know that you moved her into that office. Is she a help in there?
Absolutely.
Okay.
They've done considerable effort in that office. In fact, you know, we should, during my council comments, I was going to talk about Suppley Clooney, but that's, that's not the time, but the, because you expressed some concerns in there. I mean, if you go into my office, you can see that they've made considerable office getting control of the paper.
Oh, I know, I was going to talk about that tonight, because I, I saw firsthand.
Yes, which they did not have to, which we did not have an opportunity to do last year at all, or the first part of this year, because we're busy, just working, you never catch up.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Council President Zambranas?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
No.
Councilman Menko?
Aye.
Councilwoman Payne?
Aye.
Councilman Posnansky?
No.
Councilman Potter?
Aye.
Motion carries, Mayor.
Reports from elected officials, Council President Zambranas?
Mr. Mayor, I don't have any reports this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just have a short report for the library board. The library will be closed on November 11th for Veterans Day. Rita Pooch Saturday, Saturday, 11:15, 12:30 p.m. Yoga with Marcy on Monday, November 17th. Registration required. Creating journaling, excuse me, creative journaling on Monday, November 15th at 10:45 p.m. State planning for everyone on Monday, November 15th at 4:00 p.m. Exploration stations, ages 1 to 5 on Tuesday, November 18th. Registration required. After-school movie Tuesday, November 18th at 3:00 p.m. Library board meeting, November 18th at 6:30 p.m. Open to the public. Movie matinee Wednesday, November 18th at 2:30 p.m. Friendship giving bingo and cover dish Saturday, November 22nd. Registration required. Library book club Monday, November 24th at 6:00 p.m. Library Book Club, Monday, November 24th at 6:00 PM. Vignesa, slow flow yogurt, Monday, November 24th. Registration required. Drop-in play, Tuesday, November 25th at 10:30 AM. Bingo at the Senior Center for Seniors, Tuesday, November 25th at 1:15 PM. Tween Craft, Tuesday, November 25th at 3:00 PM. Movie matinee, Wednesday, November 26th at 2:30 PM. The library will be closed Thursday, November 27th, and Friday, November 28th. And happy Thanksgiving for all, and the crochet for beginners on Saturday, November 29th at 11:00 AM. That concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Payne?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Police statistics for the month of October, between October 1 and October 31, the police responded to 1,510 calls for service. During this period, they conducted 110 radar details and made 560 motor vehicle stops during this period. The chief had asked me to be very clear in terms of the statistics, because with our new recruits, our numbers are going up, and that's good for our township. There were thirteen arrests made, and that involved arrests for burglary, possession of stolen property, shoplifting, DWI, possession of controlled dangerous substances, and active warrants. To note for traffic, traffic safety, there was a permanent solar-powered speed radar sign that was installed on Knox Avenue just recently. It's a new sign, it's cloud-connected, allows the police department to monitor traffic speeds and patterns in real time. And this was at the request of several residents in that area that were complaining about cars driving much too fast and creating a danger. And so, with that permanent sign, that should be, really help that area with those traffic concerns. On behalf of the Fire Department, the total number of incidents for the month of October was 21 and 294 to date. What's important to note is that in terms of their process, with respect to replacing officers, that there will be a nomination for the vacancy of Deputy Chief for the term in November. And the Fire Department has proudly introduced its first Hearst extraction tool in October. I got a lot of information about the Hearst extraction tool. I'm learning a lot about all this equipment. The tool can be used to assist the rescue squad or enforceable entry scenarios or forcing upon, oh, I'm sorry, forcing open automotive hoods for engine fires. So, there's a complete ensemble of rescue equipment, along with hydraulic lines and pumps. The cost of the equipment was estimated at $75,000. I'm happy to announce the cost to the borough was zero. Members are needed, and so the chief asked that I make an announcement as, at tonight's meeting. Candidates who are interested in joining the Milltown Fire Department are encouraged to stop by the firehouse on Monday nights at 6:30, or email joinmilltownfire@gmail.com. And my final report is on behalf of the Rescue Squad, and there were, in October, seventy-eight total calls. They happily reported that, for them, an uneventful haunted river walk is quite a success, and they were able to spend a lot of time with the eighth grade class, helping them have a successful event. They too are looking for recruits, and you can email if you're interested at recruitment, uh, it's recruitment@milltownrescue-squad.org. And that concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you. Councilman Poznanski?
Sure. This is, I'm gonna start with the Senior Center. There, the remaining November trips include Thursday, November 12th, bus trip to Delicious Orchards. Monday, November 17th, bus trip to Monmouth Kitchen. The bus will leave at 11:15 AM. On Wednesday, November 19th, a bus trip to Camillo's Restaurant. The bus will leave at 11:30 AM. And Monday, November 24th, a bus trip to Amazing Savings. The bus will leave at 9:30. And upcoming events, the VNA nurse will be available for appointments on Monday, November 17th, from 12 to 3:00. And the service is available for Milltown seniors free of charge each month. Please sign up on the Board if you're interested. And we're also having Bingo with Debbie Miller, new Councilwoman, on Tuesday, November 25th, 1:15 with prizes. All are welcome to attend. And for the DPW, it's a short report. Leaf bags, again, are available Monday through Friday, and Saturdays, 8 till noon through November. And the leaf cleanup is ongoing in parks and will continue through November. And branches are being trimmed also throughout town. And Ralph Jazanowski and I walked Albert Avenue Park, because the new bike path will be coming in, and we're trying to determine the best area for it. And also for the seniors, and I hope Ron Dixon is watching this. In honor of the men and women from the American Legion, Women's Auxiliary and Sons of the American Legion Post 25, I would like to thank them for the generous donation for the Senior Center. It's greatly appreciated, and will be used to help those in need. Commander Dixon dropped off a check, I believe it was $2,500, it may, maybe more, but it wasn't less. He didn't, he didn't do it to get any kind of recognition for it, but I want to give him the recognition for it. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Potter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From the Milltown Recreation Department, we've had a fun-filled and successful fall season, and several of our adult programs are scheduled to wrap up mid-December. Our Recreation Advisory Meeting was held this past Thursday, November 6th. The Fall Coed Softball Championship Game was also held on Thursday, November 6th. Congratulations to all of our teams for a great season, and especially to Team Number Four, this team, this season's champions. Our Fresh Theater Program will present its final performance of Descendants on Tuesday, November 11th. Our Late Fall Indoor Soccer Clinics kick off this Thursday, November 13th, at Parkview School, and we're thrilled to share that registration numbers are at the highest we've ever seen. Don't miss your last chance to join. The registration deadline is Tuesday, November 11th. New this fall, cooking classes at Marcel's Kitchen in East Brunswick. This fun, hands-on program will run for four weeks, beginning Monday, November 24th, and concluding on December 15th. It's designed for children ages nine through 12. The registration deadline is Monday, November 17th. Winter youth basketball registration is now open. We're excited to see several volunteers who have every, already signed up to coach and take advantage of our $25 coaching incentive, which offers a discount to one child's registration. More youth programs are being offered this fall. Chess, Kids Yoga, and Mad Science Funky Forces. Registration is now open for all these programs on Community Pass. Adult winter program registration will be open in the next few weeks, so please keep checking Community Pass for updates. Mark your calendars. The annual tree lighting ceremony is scheduled for Friday, December 5th. We'll be holding a winter cult drive at Borough Hall from December 3rd, 1st to December 19th. Help families in need this winter. We're accepting gently-used or new coats, scarves, gloves, and hats for both children and adults. We've reserved tickets at the State Theater for Friday, May 3rd, for the Price is Right Family Fun Night. Registration opens this week. Seats are limited, and could make a great holiday gift. Please contact the Registration Department with any questions at 732-828-2100, extension 141, or email kimmograph@milltownborough.com. And please be sure to visit our recreation webpage and familiarize yourself with upcoming programs, and help us continue to make Milltown Recreation a community in motion. From the Planning Board, the meeting in November was canceled, and the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, December 3rd. And from the Milltown Fourth of July Committee, two upcoming events. Saturday, January 24th, karaoke night at the Milltown VFW, and Saturday, April 18th, our first annual red, white, and brew event at the American Legion. Stay tuned for more details being shared in the upcoming months. And, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you. I just have a brief report. The Schwinneman Subcommittee met at the cabin. We did a walkthrough with Mr. Jazanowski, and we were trying to schedule the next meeting within the next two weeks. More reports after that. Reports from Borough Professionals, Mr. Peter Vignolo.
Mr. Mayor, just one note, the executive session for this evening does not need to occur. That can be taken off the agenda, and I have no further report. I apologize. One second. I'm sorry, I, Councilman Manko, sorry.
That's all right. Utilities were in the forefront tonight, and there's not much to report. Bye. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of things to report on tonight. The Northbrook Drive Phase One Project is nearing completion. The contractor recently restored all the lawn areas with sod, planted replacement trees, repaired sidewalks that needed repairing, and we're working towards closing out that project. The Northbrook Drive Phase Two Project has had the survey work completed, and the road design is underway. That's the same for Albert Avenue Bike Path Phase Two. Survey work is done, and the path design is underway. And finally, and with regard to the green space self-storage project, the board approval for that project required a water main loop that loops from Ryder's Lane through the site to the end of Leonard Road, which is a dead-end water line. That water line is mostly installed. The contractor needs to make the connection on Leonard Road, and that's gonna require a water shutdown. That's scheduled for November 18th, and the homes that are gonna be affected by that have been notified this past Friday. And that concludes our report. Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Mr. McQuill?
No.
Okay. Mr. Carr?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So, I just had a quick follow-up to our conversation last council meeting. Councilman Poznanski asked a question regarding Suppley and Clooney, and what do they do? I thought I would bring in, so, this is, you know, one month of bank reconciliations or bank statements that they do for finance. There's sixteen of them in here that they do every month for the borough, especially in finance. If you look at the one for the current fund, or the fund that we use to pay the bills, it's about twelve pages long. That's a substantial bank statement to reconcile every month, to the penny. Now, in my house, if I get my bank record, I'm a couple of bucks off, I just sort of punt, and I move on, I put a note to myself, can't do that in the business that we're in. It has to be to the penny all the time. And that's a, I'd say, time-consuming, laborious conversation, if you will. If you look at tonight's bill list, there were sixty-five checks on that, on that bill list, just for tonight, and tonight's a light night. Next council meeting, I spent some time this morning paying the school in this county, you know, I blew through about three million dollars with the money today, just paying the bills for, like I said, the school and the county. Plus, we're gonna have a substantial bill list, you know, as we get closer to the end of the year. It's a lot of work. Part of what she does is that, I'll get a, one that she does is every month, or one they do every month, I get an Excel spreadsheet where we now move money within the accounts, and now, of course, tied into Edmunds. Not just, not just tied in to the bank itself, but these numbers are tied into Edmunds, where then, for instance, we pay postage, I'll get a little spreadsheet that says, move money from current to claims, or claims to current, as we pay all these different bills to settle it and make sure it's tied out to the penny every month. Anybody like to look at these? You know, you can look at them, I ask that you not, obviously, take them with you, since they have our bank account numbers on them, and we don't want to find them in the trashcan. And, Mayor, I'm finished.
I would just, I want to say, right, that also adds to the fact that that's an independent auditor.
Yes.
And so, that, not, the in-house, or not, people are only looking at it and, you know...
It's always good, even with the audit, if you consider that our audit, current audit of PKF O'Connor last year, Samuel Klein, it's always good to have an outside look as part of the internal controls, a fresh look, because we, as humans, have a tendency, you see something, and you see the same mistake, and you don't see it. I mean, how many times have you proofed your own paper when you were in college or in high school, or any document, and then you give it to somebody else, and they, they point out a huge, obvious mistake that, you know, you've been staring at this document all day, and you didn't see that you're using the wrong word, you're totally out of, or you said it twice, and you just didn't even break the code. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor. And I thank you.
Thank you.
No report, ma'am.
Old business. Does any member of council have any old business to bring before council?
Well, I do. It dovetails into what Mr. Carr was saying about the new clerk. I'd like to express my appreciation for the new clerk in the finance office. She's ripped through files, sitting for years, in three weeks' time. And I'd also like to thank the original clerk in the office, I won't use her name, but she knows who she is, because she had told me that she found an old resume, and went through it, and contacted the person, and I believe she's the right person for the, for the job. At the same time, the DPW, when a clerk was out on Sicily, her coworker, working part-time, was limited by her hours for helping residents. As I recall, we hired another person in the finance department, who may or may not still be there. She was vetted, voted on, and hired. We had another person, and she's in the clerk's office now. We have a lot of movement in one office, and not, not enough in others. I believe there must be a needs assessment for different departments. Annual reviews are important for employees also. Union standards may apply, yet not all employees are union. All of our employees are important to the residents, aren't appreciated and are appreciated by most. They must also be treated respectfully by officials, as well as by the residents. And that concludes that report.
Close old business. Does any member of council have any new business to bring before council tonight?
Are we, are you going to address the notice of change of rules of council?
That's a new business? Yes, sir.
Well, I, I just think this is foolish. This is like changing the rules in the fourth quarter and say, okay, you guys gotta apply a new rule. We should just wait till the beginning of the year. I don't see why we'd want to change this. Second of all, I think this impedes someone's First Amendment rights, limiting a council person to five minutes. I don't understand. I've never complained about it. I may not like what some people have to say up here some days, but I listen to them, and I respect their First Amendment rights. I don't, certainly don't want to impose upon, if they have something to say, and a point to bring across, I'd want to give them their ten minutes or fifteen minutes, because it's imperative that they exercise their First Amendment rights. I, I don't know why someone would request this, but I, 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 I'd rather spend twenty minutes listening to somebody here than I would rather to deny them their First Amendment rights. So, I, I don't understand this. I would just, like, I'd rather move this and postpone this till the first of the year.
Well, I agree with Councilman Collins, and I have a lot to say about it. I was going to say it tonight, but I'll say, I'll save it for the next, for the next meeting. But also, to, to infringe on the speaking rights of people here, elected officials, that our job is to relate to the residents, to the taxpayers, what they need to know, or maybe what they'd like to know, or just our opinions on things, because that's why we were elected here. That's why we were put up here. So, I appreciate what Councilman Collins is saying, and I will have more. I actually wrote something to speak about tonight, and I will read it next meeting.
Yes. I mean, our, our job up here is to educate and inform the public, you know, whether that takes more time for us, it, that depends, but I'm certainly, I, I've never had anybody up here complaining about anybody else speaking too much, although there are some people that do abuse it.
So, as the gentleman who created or requested the creation of this change, that was me, again, Councilman Frank Manko, Milltown, just so we all know. Simply, if the people who elected us, when they come up to make comments, they're directly told, five minutes. After everybody speaks, you get five more.
Is that how it works?
Yeah, that's kind of how we've been doing it. That's kind of how it's said, every, I think that's kind of how, what the mayor says. So, I kind of figured, you know what, is that, why do we, because comments also do not...
I'm timing you right now, by the way.
Well, that's great. Well, see, this is under new, under new business, so, doesn't really follow the same parameters. New business is typically where we create new business, and this is new business. But the other way of looking at it, from where I was sitting, is also that in comments, they're statements. They don't, they don't create litigation, they don't create things for the town. That's typically where new business or old businesses, that's where that stays, or that's where that starts. So, comments are really more arbitrary, and the town does not suffer any loss if an opinion gets shortened or presented as a, as Jon Stewart, Daily Show created, I Blame FDR, because he started the first podcast, and since then, they've taken over.
I mean, pardon my frankness, Frank, but you've abused it more than anybody else.
And then, I guess I'm doing them a service by silencing my own tongue.
Well, I don't think you're doing it a service, you know, violating people's First Amendment rights. I think that's...
I think the First Amendment is the worst thing you can bring up in this. It's ridiculous. No one's stopping anyone from talking. It's basically just saying, you get five, and then you get five later. And if you can't save the world in the ten minutes, then probably just, you know, say what you can and move on.
Excuse me?
And I'd like to, one more statement would be, we don't own Fort Avenue, so everybody who thinks that we can do something, or we should've done something, it's not ours. So, I would like to invade the moon, or possibly colonize it, can't do that either. That's new business. So, if we could vote on that next. But also, at the top of this, it also mentions, at the reorganization meeting on January 6th, that's when we would adopt this. So, this is just putting it out there, so you could read it ahead of time, but they were talking about January, not anything special or immediate.
Nope. Actually, just for the record, both of the notice of changes for tonight would be something that would be placed before the council for adoption as an amendment to the rules at your next meeting. So, you guys need to decide what you want to do.
Maybe you should've read the council notes, Frank.
If, if you could let me finish, Councilman, for a second, I appreciate it. We focused on one of the changes tonight, but there are two changes proposed to the rules of council, the second being having committee reports read at each meeting, as opposed to just the first meeting. So, and that is, that is a secondary change to the rules of council that was proposed for this meeting. I believe it was proffered by Councilman Poznanski, and as well as you, Councilman Collins, last meeting.
Well, that's the way it was for eighteen months, and somebody somehow changed it, but we didn't get to vote on it.
Well, it's actually been only at the first meetings in your rules since January. Whether or not you decided not to follow those rules is your prerogative, which I've indicated many times before.
Like, like I said, I'd rather, I appreciate my fellow councilmen's First Amendment rights and being able to speak, although some people go off on a tangent somewhere, you know, start talking about Kissinger in China and a twenty-dollar lunch, but that doesn't have any...
I would just merely indicate that, you know, the First Amendment is subject to reasonable time, place, and matter rules, and...
Well, that's what we have the mayor for, he can gavel us down.
Well, just, just for the record, the council has seen fit to tell the public that the reasonable time, place, and manner of their comments is five minutes plus an additional five. So, if you were to impose that upon other council members, it would be a reasonable time, place, and manner restriction on your, on your speech.
So, so is it the council meeting, or is it the public meeting?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Is it the council meeting, or is it the, is it the, the audience?
I don't, I think we're having an esoteric, you know, theoretical discussion regarding something that's really unnecessary. I think it's, I think it's the borough's meeting, and you're conducting the borough's business.
Right. So, how can we put a timer on there? You're going to put an hourglass on it, turn it over when we, you know, our time's up? I'm sorry?
I, I will not be a proponent of holding that timer, sir. I'm just merely indicating that, you know, that, that restriction would be reasonable. That's all I'm saying.
I think it's a child...
Whether or not you choose to vote for that restriction is your prerogative, sir.
Well, I, I mean, doesn't that impede our First Amendment rights, sir?
I think I just answered that question.
I don't think...
I think part of this is, and it's, it's, it's not really being spoken, is that there are people who, who speak and there are people who don't like this, what is spoken. And I, and I'll be honest, I'm, I'm the one who does most of the talking during council comments, so if, if, if the, the motion's levied towards me, I welcome it and we'll have a nice discussion next meeting.
Sounds good.
Because I am prepared.
All right. See no further new comments.
Could I ask one question, please, in preparation for the next agenda? Are we just talking the one rule of council to be changed or both?
Whatever, whatever's on here.
There were two.
There were two.
There were two, yes.
The, the secondary one was the request that you and Councilman Poznanski had last meeting to remove from your agenda an indication that council reports would only be read at the first meeting of the month. I emailed you and Councilman Poznanski about that, hadn't heard back, so I decided that in light of the fact that we were already addressing changes to the rules of council, I would include it in tonight's agenda. So that, that is there, that is something that's being, you can decide you don't want to do that anymore. That's your prerogative again.
I'd like to do it, but I'd, I'd like to know how it came about that every meeting it was expected that reports were due. I mean, the reports came, I believe, to the clerk, just like they came to Monica, and there was no discuss, there was never a discussion that it was only supposed to be one meeting a month until there was a problem with the council comments and then it was, it was looked up and reverted back, and which is why I wanted to, to change. Because I understand, like, like you said, Mr. Vignola, that sometimes we don't follow Robert's rules, correct?
Sometimes you don't follow your own rules. I mean...
Well, Robert's rules are, aren't they, aren't they one the same generally?
Your rules and Robert's rules? No, you, your council rules are your council rules and they are supplemented by Robert's Rules of Order. So you, you utilize them as part of your rules, but your rules lay out how you conduct your agenda, what you do and you don't do, how long people can speak, how your committees are created, and all of that is in your rules.
But, but you see the agenda before it comes out, do you not?
Do I see the agenda before it comes out?
Well, 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 like what I'm speaking about, I mean, and it's silly, with the committee reports, we're supposed to do them once a month. We've been doing them twice a month. Did, did you notice that, like, past year and a half, that...
Again, I've, I've, I've mentioned it many a time. It is not my prerogative to tell the council what it needs to do or not do with respect to its rules and whether it follows them. They are, they are rules. They, they are not a, a law that is going to be, you know, subject to some arbitrary third party coming in and saying that they violated them and there is a punishment to be accorded. I mean, you guys follow them or you don't follow them?
I'm, I'm not expecting you to, to, to opine on that, but at the same time, it, it's just interesting how we, we've been going about consecutively, doing reports at every meeting, even though it's not called for, and then it's abruptly changed because council comments were brought back. It's just interesting to me.
Well, I think the, what was done was there was a concern that the council wasn't following the rules that it adopted in January to the letter and in light of the fact that there was a concern because they had been changed without any vote, that they were returned to what they were. And at that point, if the council wanted to change the rules to be something else, it's the council's prerogative. I think that's what happened.
Well, I, I appreciate that you're, that you're speaking about it, but other people who are the ones changing the, the, the rules or the laws have not said anything.
I don't think anybody's changed the laws.
No?
No, they, they have changed...
So, okay. January 6th, rework.
Yes, sir.
The, the law that we passed here to, to have the agenda template, was that a law? Yeah, you can sigh. Was that a law or was it not a law? Or was it Robert's rules or was it, was it or by law?
You adopted a set of rules that you decided as a council you were going to abide by.
And it was changed, correct?
The rules were changed? The, the rules were changed twice?
Oh, okay. But, but who changed the rules? Is it to, there's majority of, of council or is it, is it the clerk or is it business administrator? Because the, 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 the council did not change.
I, I think you know the answer to it, Councilman.
Nobody asking you. But can you tell me, can you tell me then?
We have opined on the rule change or the lack thereof.
No, but I'm asking you to tell me, who changed, who changed the, the law? Because it was a law. Am I correct?
It's, sir...
No, I'm asking you, I'm, am I correct? Was it a law or was it not past law on January 6th?
Sir, it was a set of rules.
Twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two.
You adopted a resolution, you adopted a resolution for a set of rules you were going to abide by and then decided not to necessarily abide by.
Who, who decided?
I think the council did when it decided it was having committee reports at the second meeting.
No, no, please, I'm not talking about that.
I understand you're not talking about that.
But you are, but you're changing.
I'm not changing anything, sir.
The, the council comments, was that voted into law or was it not?
Was it voted into law?
Did we, did we vote on January 6th?
To have council comments, yes.
I'm, I'm not speaking in riddles here.
No, we're speaking in circles, sir.
Are we?
I, I think we are. I think, I think...
Oh, okay. Who, who gets to change the law? Who, who gets to change the law to, to get rid of council comments?
I think there was an attempt made to streamline your meeting. I think that...
By who? By who? But, but does council not vote on that?
Sir, I think you know the answer to the question. Otherwise, we wouldn't be back to the way it was.
I'll finish here.
So my, my question is, if they're going to bring this as a resolution to the next meeting, is it both of them or just one of them?
It's going to be, it'll be, it'll be two separate resolutions because I don't like to do things like that in conjunction because it creates some confusion as to how you vote on the resolution. So this was proposed as two different notices of change of the rules of council, one for each of the, you know, respective changes, and they will be presented as independent resolutions at the next meeting, Councilman Poznanski.
I'd like to close new business. Open to the public. The public comment portion of our meeting is to allow the public to bring to the council's attention their concerns or comments. The council will respect the public's time by refraining from any comments until the speaker has finished. It should be further noted that the public comment portion of our meeting is not structured as a question and answer session. Please state your name and address for the record when you come to the podium. Just a reminder, under the rules of council, individuals wishing to speak during the public input part of the meeting should be limited to five minutes and may, after other speakers have finished, may be allowed to speak for a second five-minute period. If someone raises their hand, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Debbie Miller, 92 Ford Avenue. After the last meeting, I watched it the next night or next night after that, and there was a lot of static in the communication. So I watched a couple others, the same thing. I think that the residents deserve better and if there's money to improve that, it should be used to improve it. The other thing I have a question about or comment, I guess they're watching how that electronic speed thing works on Oaks Avenue, and I know Main Street is probably a county road, but has there ever been a consideration to maybe put one of those in the beginning of Main Street? You know, when people are coming from North Brunswick and also on Ford Avenue, because the trucks are seeming to go faster and faster. Thank you.
Debbie, could, if you could send me an email and I'll follow up with the chief on those questions.
Thank you.
Weisenberger, 99 JFK Drive. I'd just like to get a little information, once again, on the township acquiring property. We're talking about rules, state, county, whatever. What rules would Milltown follow to acquire property? Is that state rules? You know, if we're going to purchase a piece of property, the town, are they, they're not council rules, so those are coming from, we're following state statute, something?
As far as what, the purchasing, we would purchase property just like everything, like everyone else would, unless you're talking about eminent domain? Is that what you're referring to?
Well, that would be one case, but just like when we exchanged property for the, the electric substation, we had to swap them.
We did only and swapped, correct?
Right, and there was a lot of documentation.
Adopted in ordinance. Typically, it's an ordinance that would be adopted pursuant to, you know, the state statute.
Yeah, because my, my point to that, I've read over 1,300 township ordinances from 2016 up and a much lesser amount of, well, resolutions, a much lesser amount of ordinances. And once again, there's nothing in there about acquiring the pond. So I'm just curious, once again, how that can happen. And my understanding then, four people or four entities get involved in that, it would be the council, it would be the township engineer, I believe, would have to be involved, the tax assessor, and the planning board. So that's what I'm saying. This, this problem with the pond, and there's nothing out there on this, is, is just, you know, a nightmare. I, I don't get it. And I just want to bring that out because I'm, I'm trying to understand this thing But we're going to, we'll change to something else now. In the newspaper archives, I've been digging back again, and I'm curious now, Mike might be able to answer this. The county planning board...
You're a longtime leader.
Yeah, well, because you're associated with many towns in the county.
Yes, we are.
Right? So this bit about the chain of lakes, when I started digging back, I got recent information that was in 2000, when they were talking about dredging that whole thing. And now I dig back and this is going back into 77, when they started talking about it and talking about dredging the whole thing, 12 and a half feet and then nine feet. So for 23 years, this dragged around, there's a ton of articles, and then in 2000, that study came out by Army Corps and everybody else, the 900,000 cubic yards. And since then, nothing. Another 25 years. So I'm curious if CME hears anything from the county, what's going on down there? Because they, they treat it, it's one of the most valuable resources we have, the water, and the whole county's involved, state of New Jersey's involved, yet what's going on?
I have not heard anything from the county or any municipalities that we know of, that we've worked with that, about the dredging.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. Well, the dredging, but the, I'm just wondering who the contact is then with the county, the county planning board, that who's, who's running the show down there? You know? Because this has been pulled off now 50 years and, and nothing's going on. So this price tag is going ching, 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 and, you know, we need the water. There's no question about that. Because all these articles pertain everything, where the water comes from, South River, the aquifer, all this stuff, so water intrusion, blah, 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 the whole thing, and the Runyon watershed, Old Bridge and all that, all in trouble, pollution, whatnot. This one here is one of the best and yet it's just being treated, you know, nobody cares. I don't get it. That's what I said. I don't know whose door we got to knock on down there, but I'd love to know, they paid a ton of money for a ton of studies. Nothing. So I just wanted to bring that up tonight, you know, appreciate it.
Seeing none, no more. I'll close audience comments. This council, any council members have any comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just a, a short comment. It's, it's an ask to the entire council. We have two meetings scheduled in December. The first meeting's on the 8th, the second meeting's on the 22nd. Would you like to have one meeting on the 15th instead of having two, two weeks apart?
I'm fine with two.
15th?
No, I'm fine with two.
Two? One?
One.
One?
I'm good with one.
I'm good with one.
Good idea.
All right. So changing from the 8th and the 22nd to just the 15th, and we did check with Joe Zanga, our CFO, just to make sure that he could do that and do whatever budget transfers he had to do. Let me go from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, just a couple of comments. First, I would like to say heartfelt shout-out to Jimmy Walsh for completing his 10th and final New York City Marathon, a remarkable milestone in a journey of dedication and purpose. Over the past decade, Jimmy has raised tens of thousands of dollars for ovarian cancer awareness, a close cause to his heart, following the loss of his mother and mother-in-law to the disease. In honor of his mom's memory and inspired by her birthdate, October 26th, 10/26, Jimmy set out a personal goal to run 10 26-mile marathons from 2016 to 2025. This year, he proudly crossed the finish line of his 10th race, fulfilling that promise. Jimmy, on behalf of the mayor and council, congratulations on this extraordinary achievement and for making such a meaningful impact in the fight against ovarian cancer. And finally, Mr. Mayor, in, in honor of Veterans Day, we extend our sincere thanks to all of our veterans. Your service and sacrifice are deeply appreciated and we are forever grateful for your dedication to protecting our freedom. Thank you.
I have something else, but I'd like to ask Councilman Collins if he'd like to speak about TK-1, because we met with them last week.
Sure. Yes, in, in answer to Mr. Debbie Miller's question, we did have TK-1 in here. Is it TK-1 or TK, TK-1?
TK-1.
Yeah, TK-1 in here, and they said they could do this in a matter of weeks, I guess, and it's not a substantial cost. I think they could do it around $2,500 to $5,000 to have the whole sound system and camera system redone, which hasn't been done in, I guess, 30 years, right? So you, I, I'd just also like to say, thank our, thank your veterans for their service to our country, and without them, we may not be at this meeting tonight for fighting for our country and fighting for our people. Thank you. Go ahead, dear.
Sure. I'd like to read something. The 11th hour, the 11th day, the 11th month, 1918 was when the fighting stopped and armistice was signed, World War I was over. On this date in 1919 became the first armistice day, which in 1954 became Veterans Day to honor all veterans for their service to our country. I'd like to say to all veterans, you deserve nothing less than our respect, gratitude, and respectful recognition of your sacrifice, duty, and service. And I have a couple quotes. I have included, "Our debt to the heroic men and women and valiant women in the service of our country can never be repaid. They have earned our undying gratitude. America will never forget their sacrifices." That was from President Harry H. Truman. And there's another poignant quote for our veterans. "Some people live an entire lifetime and wonder if they ever made a difference in the world. A soldier doesn't have that problem." President Ronald Reagan. I will also honor the United States Marine Corps, who today are celebrating their 250th anniversary, their 250th birthday, today, November 10th. Their motto, "Semper Fidelis," always faithful. And I will thank Fred Carr for your service. And that concludes my report for tonight.
If I may, I would like to say that when I was running for this position that year, we were aggressively mentioning how we felt, the Republicans or whoever I was, wherever we were running, that the council had done a disservice by not getting out in front of the rate changes on a year-to-year basis. And we pointed it out in last year's, things had to go up and all. I'm just happy that this year, we did that. We were trying, the council was actively trying to work to keep things from ever swelling to a boiling point where you get hit with big bills. It doesn't make, it doesn't make any decisions good or better, it doesn't make them any easier on the council, but it's the right thing to do. And some of those things are hard things to do, hard things to say, but they are done in the best interest of the town. And sometimes it, whether it seems like it's a choice, it's really not. The bill's got to get paid, just what it is. I do thank all the veterans. One other thing I would just mention, the 12U Milltown Padres are planning a trip for their 2026 Cooperstown trip, and there was a fundraiser this Wednesday at Chick-fil-A in North Brunswick. You mentioned them and they get some, that helps them pay for their trip, something to think about. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Okay, I'll close council comments. I have a couple comments. One, I'd like to congratulate the 250th celebration of the Marine Corps as well. I also, I thought about this in great detail. Ms. McCarthy, I am vetoing ordinance 251576 regarding the replacement of the water mains due to concerns about the fines outlined in the proposal. It is unreasonable for the borough to impose the penalty of $250 per month on a residence when the town itself has approximately 15 meters that are not yet installed. The borough currently operates, not being, operates not being hindered in remaining less than 10% of the meters waiting installation, nor by the existing list of service line replacements. Additionally, residents with the lead or galvanized lines would, under current plans, be placed on the end of the replacement list funded by the million-dollar grant. Has each council member considered the fine of $250 per month placed in a serious financial burden on the residents, potentially even in lieu of possibly losing their homes through the borough through annual sales tax, tax sale? We should be acting as responsible neighbors and representatives, not imposing punitive measures that could harm our residents. I urge you to reconsider the priorities reflected in this ordinance, as I think you need to check the priorities instead of trying to rule the borough with an iron fist. Thank you. Peter, are we doing executive session?
No, executive session, I'm interested.
I have a question about the veto power-
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
No, I have a comment about your veto.
You had your comments.
Mr. Vignola, can you explain how the mayor's veto power works to the council?
You had your comments.
No, I'm asking him a question. I couldn't comment until he vetoed, Mayor, so I want to know what the rules are.
To be fair, at this point, the mayor's veto may be a little premature. He's merely advised you of his intent to veto, because the ordinance hasn't been adopted on second reading. When the ordinance is adopted on second reading, assuming it is, the mayor has expressed his intention that he will veto that ordinance.
Well, it's good to know ahead of time, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, probably would have been good if you would have mentioned that during the, the reading, so we could all spoke about it.
At this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. I had a motion made by Councilman Collins, seconded by Councilman Potter. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.